I do need your signature on that.
There will be a test?
Yeah, I don't know about a test.
Over Christmas, right?
You need me to sign the what? It's just acknowledging that the meeting started at 5:30. I just have to keep it on file. We have new counsel out there.
So I don't show up late, huh?
He's not answering.
I mean, it's hidden, yes. So now I just send videos, just kind of, you know, send to Ellen and just go.
Hey.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, if that's what it is.
Yeah.
What the issue with him was that?
Hello?
I got one. They've been so careful not to get bit. And then they have surgery coming in after. Oh, by the way, I vote. Oh, wait, sir. You're up there, boss. He and Ellen had it. Yep. The way you... I thought maybe we were going faster.
Mine can be a little bit myself.
We got your microphone. Sorry, we haven't got that. We can have that. I'll talk to Ellen.
Yeah, we had one. I was there by myself.
I need a lot of...
That was a cheap way to do it, just give them a minute. We got your mic.
All right. She had their all the time. But I couldn't read his name. But she's doing it. You go give blood, they'll...
Hi. Hello, everybody?
Yeah.
So is this containing everything that you see on the Internet when you look for codes or whatever? This is all in here?
Need me to follow around?
Well, great, because sometimes that's what they refer you to. I can get to it. Well, I know, that's what I thought, too. I don't know why.
Yeah, that's the smart copy.
This is everything, huh? Oh, cool, okay. Thank you. All right. Forget it.
It is interesting. It's been about a half hour. Don't know if I understand. There was two things on the clock. Just say your spot.
You still have about six minutes, so talk amongst yourselves. We can't start early, so. Happen. I guess not.
Well, it's nice. It stays up about...
Yeah. You did. The idea there is that... How does it... That contributes to brain drain because... And so that's... Contributes to brain drain. That was the second part of the case. So that's very...
You were airborne? What's that? That's your outfit? Yeah. Thank you for your service. Well, I bet you I enjoyed it. I had a dear friend from World War II. He served airborne. He was wounded in Anzio with white Bosso. Was that 82nd or 101st? That was 82nd. Yeah, they jumped in Italy. 101st. Have you had it? In the airborne, the English airborne unit. Third airborne, jumping Normandy. And he was from down in southern Nebraska, Carlton area. And sure as a number X couldn't serve over to do so. Again, thank you very much. I've read a lot of the books. I'm a big historian of war, so. Oh, so much. I love to read that stuff. I've got hundreds of books. And you can't ever learn enough and appreciate what you guys have through. They were amazing men, and they still are that are serving. So thank you, Lee. What color is that? Your walk, I think you...
Yeah.
Not anymore. It was his group. It's a book about his group. It's called The Devils in Baggy Pants. The... I was gonna take a little bit of that film. Yeah. Those Devils in Baggy Pants. Yeah. The market for them. That was quite a guy. Missed two. No, that was a big nail. It was written, it was... What are you gonna do? It was too far.
How are you? Good to see you.
Good. Please do have your picture taken.
About 3:35.
I got there about four. I said the last guy brought the camera.
Oh. Well, I'm not a photogenic person, so that's possible.
Get earlier, catch up.
I got caught down in Holbridge.
There we go.
North Platte City Council Chamber.
Hi, this is Dave Feyman with Credit Management in Grand Island. How are you today?
I'm well, Dave. This is Brandon Kelleher, and the mayor of North Platte. You are on the speakerphone in the council chamber. And we'll be starting here in about three minutes, okay?
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much. It's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you virtually as well.
Thank you.
Sorry I missed your call tonight. Did you try to call me again?
What?
Did you try to call me again?
No, I went over. I saw you had the 3 o'clock slot, so. You had the 3 o'clock slot. Something fun in Holbridge?
We're handling these two.
Yeah, yeah.
How about that? I couldn't think.
Nice job. Good, you.
No, I've got an old associate.
Have you talked with him recently?
Not lately.
How's his practice?
Good.
How are you?
Yes, David.
Yeah, I have his father forever, because they have deers fertilizer down there.
I thought you were gonna say because they had the liquor store there and got murdered.
Oh, I didn't know that.
That was constant. That was just there.
Well, I didn't know that.
Little tiny walk-in. Just really kind of all in the walk.
I did not know that. I found it.
Oh, yeah. One of these? But you got one two years ago. It's a code. It's all the codes.
Yeah, I'm working.
It says looking them up. These are hard copies. Hang on for a second. What do you want me to do? Am I by yourself?
Am I by myself? Yes, I've been by myself for years.
I'm sorry. You can all sit on our side.
It's not so bad.
I agree. So Jim's not gonna be here.
No, he had his shoulder replaced.
Yeah. Replaced?
I called him to see how he was doing.
I think these are hot. I think these are on. Renee was... Can we turn our mics off? Are they on? They have to be on. This'll be good.
I'll try.
Are you asking?
Probably sitting a little close to it, too.
People at home can't hear you.
That's what I've heard.
For the card, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that.
Do you feel like we should have a count now? Nine, eight, seven? Do they rest if we start 15 seconds early?
I had to wait until...
Okay, everyone, let's get going. Welcome to the city council meeting, North Platte, on December 15th, beginning at 5:30 PM. This is the call to order. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. There is, let's see. Sorry, we changed the order of a couple of things here, so I'm gonna take, I'm gonna fumble around with this for a second. The very first thing that we have is our important invocation by Pastor Bob Deirdoff. Pastor, would you please?
Before I pray, in behalf of the North Platte ministerial, which I'm a member, we thank you for the opportunity to again bring the prayers. And we know it wasn't possible during COVIDs earlier, but thank you for letting us pray and cover you with that. We pray. Dear Lord God, heavenly Father, we thank you this day that you have granted us the gift of government that would provide order and protection for your beloved people. We thank you for those elected and hired to serve in this capacity. We ask you to grant them wisdom, patience, skill, and leadership abilities to do well their tasks and be good stewards of our city's resources. We thank you for those who serve in dangerous parts of the city, especially those who work in law enforcement, fire and rescue, and those who serve outside the city, respecting it and protecting it in our armed forces. We ask your protection on all of our citizens, from the youngest newborn to the oldest gray hair. We ask your guidance upon this group as they meet. And we ask your special protection on those who work in our health care field, that they too would be protected as they provide necessary services and medical care during this difficult time. Create your guidance to all who speak, all who deliberate, all who vote this night. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Let's believe this.
Let's believe this is the right of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, and free of any injustice.
Quick reminder, your microphones are on tonight. Please keep them on throughout the meeting. The reason we're doing that is because folks who are watching from home have difficulty hearing us when we're not near a mic. We've extended a mic out there to Mr. Carmen and Mr. Vols. And Mr. Lucas will have to share one. I'm sure that they'll manage that somehow. So, okay, thank you very much. If you have the opportunity to speak to the council as a whole using the public mic, I believe it's on. I can see the red light. Please make sure you're speaking into the microphone, or I will gently point at the microphone like this, reminding you to please speak into the microphone. Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lee, Tryon, you.
Here. Here.
Garrett. Carmen.
Here. Here. Here.
Okay, there is a copy, a current copy of the Open Meetings Act of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. The public may address specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please identify yourself by stating your name and address. Please address the council through the mayor and limit remarks to three minutes or less. We respect our city employees and request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator, Mr. Kibben, or the mayor, which is me. Individuals in violation will be declared out of order. Now we have the consent agenda. Oh, excuse me, before we begin that. Because many of us are wearing masks here, it's a little hard to sometimes hear who made what motion and when, and who seconded and who made the motion initially. So if, when you second a motion, would you please gesture just a little bit so my eye will catch you, and then I will repeat? Just, this is just an example. If Mr. Reeker were to make a motion, and then Mr. Garrick were to second it, I would say motion, Reeker, Garrick second. Everybody on board there? Okay, thank you. It's just for the sake of simplicity in the meeting. The consent agenda. All matters under the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item for, excuse me, from consent by request. Number one, approve minutes of the December 1st, 2020. Number two, place on file the treasurer's report for October 2020. Number three, approve appointment of David Fudge to the North Platte Planning Commission. Number four, approve appointment of Greg Wilkie to the Board of Adjustment. Number five, adopt recommendation by the North Platte Planning Commission for preliminary and final approval of Penniston 1st replat located at 309 East E Street.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to remove number five.
Okay. Is that a motion?
I would make a motion to remove number five. Yes, sir.
I'll second.
Okay, motion, Reeker, second, Tryon. Vote, please. You are voting to remove item number five from the consent agenda for consideration by the council. That motion passes seven to zero.
Make a motion if we adopt the remainder of the consent agenda?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Reeker and a second by Woods to adopt the remainder of the consent agenda. Please vote if you have not already done so. That motion passes seven to zero.
Mr. Mayor, Pete Volz?
Yes, sir.
I move we enter into a closed session to discuss matters related to contracts and potential litigation.
I second.
We seem to have a procedural error. We have to resolve number five first.
Oh, I...
So then we'll be happy to entertain that motion, Councilman Volz. Thank you. So please withdraw the motion for the sake of clarity.
I do withdraw the motion.
Okay, we need to, let's see, have some... Do you wish to make a motion around number five, or do you wish discussion? Or what are you thinking, Mr. Reeker?
I just was kind of curious. It says adopt preliminary and then final approval at one time. And I'm a bit confused as to why this is being done that way. And maybe Mr. Kibben or someone could offer some explanation.
Would you like Judy to do that, or do you want to go for it? Judy, would you join us up front here, please?
Judy Clark, planning administrator, Mayor Kelleher, Councilwoman Reeker. We historically have done this as preliminary and final. We always have a preliminary plat and a final map plat. We don't do them in separate motions. We've always done this for quite some time. The reason it was on consent is because there's nothing abnormal about this subdivision. It's just a simple lot split. There's no addition of any water sewer lines, no addition of new concrete for streets, anything like that. So that's why it's on the consent. And historically, this is the way that we have done it in the past. We can change, however you would like, but that's how we've done it in the past.
Thanks for the clarification. That's what I was looking for.
Okay.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
So I make a motion, and then we adopt number five of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion, Reeker, and I think Tryon was second. It was quick, though. Vote, please. We are voting on number five in the consent agenda. Donna, would you vote, please? Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Volz.
This time I would like to make, to move to enter into closed session to discuss matters related to contracts or potential litigation.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. We need to vote, please. Waiting on results. There we go, okay. We have six yes and one no, so the motion passes. At this point, we need to ask everyone to please leave the room, except the council. This matter will not take more than 10 or 15 minutes, I do not believe.
I actually had to clarify that with Angie. I was like, now one is yes, right? In case I have to vote.
Yeah, I know. We need to color code them.
I guess I'm getting paid what I'm worth.
Do you get a do-over if you hit the wrong button?
No, I tried.
Apparently not.
They're not activated?
Okay.
Hi.
Hello, this is Dave Feyman with Credit Management.
Hi, Dave. You timed it perfectly. We just went back into session.
Awesome. Well, thank you.
Okay.
I make a motion that we come back into regular session.
Second.
Vote, please. Seven to zero, that motion passes. So that was recur motion, Garrick second. Okay, we're back, everyone. Sorry, it took a little bit longer than anticipated. We have item number six on the regular agenda. Approved resolution consenting to a transfer of control of franchise between the city of North Platte and ALO Communications LLC for the remainder of the original contract term. I see we have some representatives from ALO here. If anyone has any questions, we could probably ask them to field a question for us. Okay, before the discussion, we need a motion, please.
I make a motion that we adopt. Is that what I need to say? Oh, I need to read this?
Yep.
I make a motion we approve resolution consenting to a transfer of control of franchise between the city of North Platte and ALO Communications LLC for the remainder of the original contract term.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, or excuse me, a motion recur and a second, Lucas. Do we have discussion?
I have a quick question for the representatives from ALO, if that's okay, Mayor.
Mr. Moline, would you take the mic, please, and tell us who you are, even though we kind of know you?
Brad, oops, Brad Moline, 610 Broadway, Imperial, Nebraska.
My question's simple, maybe a little separate of this request. The, you guys have enhanced your local area programming, I think, quite a bit. I know we're seeing high school sports and those things televised on the channel that's generated from Norfolk. Do you guys see that continuing? First off, I'm very complimentary of that. Do you guys see that continuing? And will your alterations with ownership negatively or positively affect that type of local access programming?
Yeah, why don't I address the ownership first? It's an interesting thing when we talk change of control because actually NellNet, our previous parent company, and SDC will actually just, each own just below 50%, I think, in the mid to upper 40s, and then management owns the rest. And so it'll still be controlled by percentage by Nebraskans. So that's one thing very important to note. What has happened is after we built Lincoln and now the demand for services has been so significant that we need more capital, simply. And so SDC's a great partner. We're real excited about that. And we really don't expect any material changes other than we're going to build a lot more Nebraska and Colorado cities. Now, on local programming, we have four values at ALO. One's to be local, one's to be exceptional, hassle-free, and honest. Well, on the local side, we've tried to push more and more into our community VOD, and that means we'll have local games, even if they're not on News Channel Nebraska, and I think that's the channel you're referring to. They'll be on, also on our video on demand. We put up St. Pat's and I think North Platte High, we have copies of their game, certain of their games over the years. We're in the process of changing our whole system over to an upgraded system, so you should see even more of that. Then News Channel Nebraska, we've partnered with Mike Flood. He owns News Channel Nebraska, and we hope to do more and more of that. And as we adjust that partnership, we'll get more and more of what I'll call local games. Right now, they're heavy on the northeast and southeast Nebraska. I'm hoping we can get through this partnership much more in the central part of Nebraska, whether it's Ogalala, North Platte, North Platte-St. Pat's, or some of the smaller schools right around this area. So we'll continue to do that. Also, and this is something we're continuing to develop, if the city, the mayor, the city council, other events want certain things broadcast to the city council, other events want certain things broadcast to the community, that's another forum. We do it for free. We'll put it on our VOD and people can access it and we'll advertise it. Those of you on social media know, we're not necessarily quiet. We, we're out there and, but we'll, we'll advertise it as another means of informing the public.
Thank you. I, I think I saw a broadcast of you guys providing maybe the state coverage of, I think, the skills competition among high school kids. And I just very, I just think that kind of give back to the communities is fantastic and I hope it serves you guys well.
The one challenge, I'm, I've been very involved in music since I was, I think I started playing in bars when I was 15 in Colorado, three, two bars, that dates me. But anyway. The one problem we have is I want to always have an even mix of sports and other activities of the kids. But so many things are copyrighted. And so we can't rebroadcast the show choirs. We can't rebroadcast, you know, those types of things, which is really unfortunate for those kids, but we just haven't found a workaround yet. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Moline.
Well, thank you. And thank you, the city of North Platte. We, we've been partners for a long time. We say we're partners with every community we're in. We know you don't play favorites, but we appreciate all that we've done through the years. It's a fabulous market for us, so. And if you ever need anything, please, 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 reach out. I, I live in Imperial. It's not that far away. A lot of people think that as these transactions happen, that the leadership has changed. Leadership's exactly the same. The, the financing is what's changing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have further discussion on this issue? Hearing none, let's vote. Motion passes, seven to zero. Thank you. Thanks for coming, guys. We appreciate you driving up in the snow.
No problem. Thank you.
Number seven. Approve the $200,000 performance-based three-year loan requested by Credit Management, Inc. according to the guideline recommendations from the Quality Growth Fund Citizens Review Committee and authorize city management to write the contract. We would need a motion before I say another word.
I move to approve the $200,000 performance-based three-year loan requested by Credit Management, Incorporated according to the guideline recommendations from the Quality Growth Fund Citizens Review Committee and authorize city management to write the contract.
Second.
Motion, Reeker, Garrick, second. Do we have discussion on this issue? We have Mr. Pearson from the chamber here. I'm sure he could answer any questions if we have questions for him. Oh, and Mr. Feiman is on the phone there. Sorry. Thank you. Do we have questions on this?
I guess just from a practical standpoint, when I look at our quality growth money, this is not an unlimited supply of gold. And, and it appears to me that we may have some very nice things coming to our town in the near future. Some of these folks may very well be asking for some funding. And my concern is that if we give a few dollars here and a few dollars there and a few more dollars here or there, and these companies want to come to our town and they really make sense for us to help them, we take our piggy bank and turn it upside down and shake it and nothing comes out. And that concerns me, that we may be giving away money that we really should be saving for a different entity.
Yes, Ms.? I'm sorry, Donna, go ahead.
I would just like to ask if this can be postponed? Or is there a timeframe for this to happen?
Gary, would you like to take that one, or would you like me to ask Mr. Feiman?
Dave Feiman is the CFO of the company, and he could probably talk to their timeline, but they, they do, they've already started some of the processes to set up operations, so, you know, obviously it may impact that somewhat. From a chamber and development standpoint, please understand we're the program administrator as requested by the city that was adopted in the economic development plan. Our responsibility is to, you know, do everything we can to convince companies that North Platte's a great place to do business and operate. And occasionally, as like Credit Management, they were considering other communities for their expansion of their operation. Very well-established company, been around 94 years. So one of the first things they asked was, are you an LB40 community, which LB40 North Platte's known as Quality Growth Fund? And of course, you know, we share the program information. Companies that are eligible are certainly, they're eligible to apply and, and many do. Sometimes that's then a back and forth between the staff and the company to get them to understand that, you know, that this does have a lot of scrutiny with both the Quality Growth Fund Committee and then on the council. And just as Ed said, you know, you have to weigh what you feel are the priorities in the community. We can't arbitrarily, you know, as a staff, just tell companies that, well, I don't think you'll be considered for this. They have the right to move it forward. Obviously, the committee felt that what their request was, was somewhat more than what was acceptable, so they negotiated a counterproposal and sent that back to Credit Management. But certainly, the final decision lies with the council. I just wanted to preface what our role is here, but Dave can probably better answer their timeline and what they'd like to get accomplished and why this is a critical part of what, what they want to do.
Thanks, Gary. Dave, I don't know how much of that you could hear, but could you give us a few words on what your timeline is for this process here in North Platte?
Well, thank you, first of all, for letting me attend the meeting. And we appreciate the hospitality and courtesy that have been extended to us as we've worked with Gary and then the Quality Growth Committee. So Credit Management is looking for another place to establish an office for a couple of reasons. First of all, we're looking for good employees. And our operation is based in Grand Island. We have a branch office in Carney and a branch office in Lincoln. So we looked to North Platte. We have also are obviously looking for clients, and we've spent some time in North Platte. We have North Platte clients. We've been a member of the chamber for some time and more than a few months, a few years. And we participate with some of the local foundations, like the Hospital Foundation, on various events. So where, from a timeline, we would like to move forward. We actually are moving forward. We're, we've interviewed people for employment. Our HR manager tells us that the quality of the employee, employees or potential employees that have been interviewed are very good. We're looking forward to that. Our operation requires considerable training. So we're building the office in North Platte with a class of, we're, we're trying to get four to six people to start the class or the group of new employees to get them trained. So we're, our plan is to get started as soon as we can. We've got a, we've got a space leased to establish our office there in North Platte, downtown North Platte. And we're working to get our equipment installed. We've worked up a method to actually begin training folks remotely at the beginning of the year if, if they accept our offers, so that we can start training them while the office is being prepared for them to move into. So we would like to have an answer sooner than later, obviously. And we are excited to get started in North Platte. We're in good faith moving forward with that and would appreciate assistance. We, I think Gary talked about the fact that we had asked for, our application asked for a different type of program. We got the counteroffer from the Quality Growth Fund Committee and have worked through that, and we are accepting of the counterproposal. So from the standpoint of moving forward, we would, we would like the council to consider the proposal that was offered to us and keep the ball moving, so to speak, on our development there in North Platte.
Thank you, Mr. Feiman.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lucas, sorry, he had his hands up before you, Donna.
I'm sorry, and I didn't mean to be rude, Donna. I wanted to make a, a comment before there was much more discussion. I'd like to ask your permission, Mayor, to abstain from the discussions and the vote on this. My, my profession at Nebraska Land National Bank, we recently signed a lease, a market lease with them on our downtown space. That's the building that we didn't totally vacate, but mostly vacated when we went to our new headquarters. And so I'd like to remove myself from the discussion. If there is any particular questions of Nebraska Land Bank or of loan logistics, I'd be happy to answer them if you guys needed.
Thank you. Donna, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Is there any other reason other than North Platte may be providing good employees for you to have a presence in North Platte? Because I know that most everything is done through e-filing. So I guess I just kind of, I'm wondering why you would take on the expense.
Yes. It's for the, it's to develop employees in the town. So as we've, I'll tell you, in our Grand Island office, we don't have any room for any more people. We're, we're full. In Lincoln, there's a lot more competition for employees. In Carney, we've got that office pretty full. So we're looking for another city in Nebraska that would offer us good employees where we don't have a physical presence. I would tell you that we're particular, we have a specific look that we want for our office. We're trying to provide a good quality environment for our employees as well as to, to attract and retain those kinds of good employees. We offer a good salary base with potential for bonuses and commissions to the employees. Our schedule of potential earnings by the employees is above the average. We offer full benefit package to full-time employees. And so the, the reason to go to another place is to attract those employees and then to become, when we're in, you know, we are participating in North Platte already, but it will be easier to be more participating with a presence there because our employees will be community members. So in that response, the company will then offer its support to our employees in their community. So it's, it's a, Credit Management is really like a big family of employees, that we take good care of our people. In 2020, we were voted best place to work in collections by the employees. That's through the National Association of Collection Agencies. So that involves blind surveys to employees to get their impressions and of what the company is like. So we're bringing you an opportunity to employ people from your area in that kind of an environment. And in return, we are looking for community support of our business. And by being in the community, that probably gives us, we feel, a better argument or pitch, if you will, to local business to use our services. So it's, it's a, it's got a business motive. We want to pay people. We want to, well, we'll actually create some economic growth and the tax base should grow. So it's a, should be a win-win for everybody involved. It is a startup office. We're not moving people from another office. We are hiring people out of the Lincoln County area to be the employees. So, you know, it's not a situation where we have people to transfer. We're, we're looking to grow, and we would like to grow in North Platte.
Thank you. And also thank you for the video.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome.
Mr. Holes, you have the floor.
Yeah, hi, Dave. This is Pete Volz, and I just, I want to thank you for, for being here and for potentially looking at North Platte for a business opportunity. And honestly, I think it's a wise business decision on your end, and with what I hear you saying, you've, you've exceeded your capability, or you, you're kind of bursting at the seams there in Grand Island and at Carney. And so it's logical to come out to North Platte. You know, it expands your market and your clientele, and it taps into our local employee pool, which is all things, and, and we really appreciate that. And I think the relationship between the city and you, if you do choose to come here, would be very beneficial to you. Now, the, where I've lost sleep on this for the past couple nights is our council is tasked with being good stewards of our taxpayers' dollars. And when you look at the Quality Growth Fund at a holistic basis, you know, the, the Quality Growth Fund, and you know all this, but I'm just going to reiterate it in my thinking process. We get our Quality Growth Fund from sales tax dollars. And we hope that it increases our property tax revenue. So in this case, those two things aren't really, we're not going, the city's not going to reap any benefit with your, with your company moving into North Platte. We are going, you are going to provide good-paying jobs and, and you will provide employment, and we appreciate that. But at some point, I really hope that North Platte can stand on its own merit with the location you chose and with the employees that you're interviewing. I think it's bringing a whole nother pool of employees into your business that I think you will benefit from, from the people of North Platte. So that, that's, that's where I'm kind of sitting on this. I don't, I really, really appreciate the fact that you're looking at North Platte. But as far as quality growth dollars, I don't know if this is the perfect fit in my mind. So I just wanted to, to be on record and say that. But we do appreciate you looking at North Platte, and, and I hope you do decide to come here, and I hope you have a very successful business endeavor here. So thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Carmen.
I hope the, I hope the employees that we employ are, you know, in a position to improve their lives and their income level so that they do create better tax base on the property tax level. Certainly, they'll have the income to spend to create sales tax revenue and replenish some of the fund that we have asked for.
Mr. Carmen, you have the floor.
Have a comment. I'm in favor of this motion. I'd like to see Credit Management come to North Platte. And I think it's an appropriate use of Quality Growth And I think it's an appropriate use of Quality Growth Funds. We've sure spent a lot of them for things that I think was, were of lesser importance than growing our, our workforce. We need more people on the payroll. We need jobs. And I think we all agree that that's probably one of our primary focus points is to bring jobs to North Platte. So I'm tickled to see these folks come. And Mr. Lucas, since you're not going to vote, I'll just, I'll vote twice. How's that? The other, other comment would be that I'm proud of the Quality Growth Fund Committee for showing some restraint. I think they've done that. I think they, they, they're coming in with about half of what was originally requested by credit management. Is that accurate, Gary? And so I'm tickled to see some restraint being exercised there. My point on that would be that I'd like to see us exercise even more restraint. I think we probably could have accomplished the same thing with having that amount again. Cutting that, that amount was finally approved by the Growth Fund Committee in half again because it sounds like to me is about a done deal. These people want to come here. They're incentivized to come here. I don't think the Quality Growth Fund money is, it's my opinion, but I don't think that's one of the bigger factors in their decision. So I'd like to see the Quality Growth Fund Committee exercise even more restraint in the future. But meantime, tickled to have this outfit come to North Platte. I hope it passes. I hope they are successful here because that's really important to us to grow our, our jobs. Thank you.
Gary, I got a quick question for you. Do you know off the top of your head what the current balance of the Quality Growth Fund is?
Yeah, it's roughly, there's about $1.7 million that's unencumbered.
Thank you.
Mr. Woods.
Dave, I'd just like to say Pete expressed my opinions better than I could have. And I would just like to, to restate two points he made. I think we have a great community to come to. We have a good workforce. And how do I say this? Well, personally, I'm against paying businesses to come to my town. I just find it wrong in my heart and my belief system. I know that's what's done, so I take that into account. But I do appreciate you all wanting to come, and I think you would do very well here. And I know from all the people I talk to that you will actually do yourself better if you don't take this money. You will have the appreciation of many businesses and people in this community for standing on your own two feet, putting your money in your business. I know you won't make it back quite as quick, but I got the idea you're probably financially sound enough that, you know, this, this won't hurt you that much. Thank you.
Other questions or discussion on this matter? Okay, just to be clear, we're going to vote here in a moment, not quite yet. A vote yes in this particular instance would then approve a $200,000 performance-based three-year loan to credit management. A vote no would not, just to be clear. Okay? So please vote. Hold on. We may have had a technical issue. Okay, computer problem. Please vote now. Mr. Carmen and Mr. Lucas abstained. This motion does not pass by a vote of five to no's and one yes. Okay. Mr. Feynman, it appears that the motion does not pass. You would reach out to Gary tomorrow. We can discuss whatever is needed to be discussed, please. You're welcome to hang on, listen to the rest of our meeting if you would like. However, you may hang up as well if you choose. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, item number eight. Approve the recommendation of the Quality Growth Fund Committee to provide $250,000 in Quality Growth Funds, excuse me, to provide $250,000 in Quality Growth Funds in partnership with the North Platte Area Chamber and Development Corporation and its partners that are providing $250,000 in local funds and apply for a $500,000 from the Nebraska Rural Workforce Housing Fund and approve $30,000 for administrative assistance to the Lincoln County Community Development Corporation to oversee the rehabilitation portion of the housing program. Do we have a motion?
I move, go ahead. I move to approve the recommendation of the Quality Growth Fund Committee to provide $250,000 in Quality Growth Funds in partnership with the North Platte Area Chamber and Development Corporation and its partners that are providing $250,000 in local funds and apply for $500,000 from the Nebraska Rural Workforce Housing Fund and approve $30,000 for administrative assistance to the Lincoln County Community Development Corporation to oversee and the rehabilitation portion of the housing program.
Okay, motion, Volz. Second, Lucas. We have discussion on this matter. I would just say briefly, this is also known as the shot in the arm program. So Ms. Tran, you have the floor.
I have a question. This is actually the one I wanted to ask you about the timeframe. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Is there a timeframe on this?
Yes.
What happens if?
The state legislature, because of the...
Gary, is your mic on? Okay, sorry, go ahead. You're good. It's, I can see the light, yeah.
It is, okay. Gary Pearson, President, North Platte Chamber and Development. The timeline is that the Nebraska Legislature in its last session authorized the 2020 funding cycle for the Rural Workforce Housing Fund. This was a pilot program they introduced in 2017 for the first time. It was phenomenally successful all across the state of Nebraska. And I would certainly argue that we had more success in North Platte with the program than any other community in the state. As a result of that success, they did authorize a second round of funding for 2020. That timeline is today, we had to have a letter of intent into the state that we either intend to apply or not as a community. Then we have until January, the latter part of January, to submit the full-blown application. But the application is very extensive and it's very involved. So there's a lot of work we need to continue to do on that. And so in talking with our Chamber Development Board and knowing how successful not only that program was, but the predecessor to that, which was our shot in the arm phase one, which was introduced in 2015, that did not involve state funding. That involved a partnership between the local Chamber Development Corporation and the city of North Platte. Round two involved that same partnership, but also included a partnership with Great Plains Health and the Union Pacific Railroad. So we were able to expand the program significantly. As a result of both those programs, we have now seen, or will see as a result of projects moving forward, we have 217 new housing units added to the inventory in North Platte. I included in your packet an article, recent article from the North Platte Telegraph indicating how successful and hot the housing market continues to be in North Platte. So this is proof that if you build more housing, you build your workforce, you build our ability to be able to recruit new companies in here. And in today's world, especially coming off the pandemic, so many people have found out they can work remotely. If we make North Platte a desirable place with a choice of housing, we'll continue to be able to grow our population here, which I think is all of our goal and has been for some time, ever since we, you know, worked so hard together in forming economic development partnerships. So yes, there is a deadline. That's a long-winded answer to it. But I wanted to stress the importance of, you know, why we need the additional time to...
Thank you for all your work on this. My concern is that there is a development out on West Phillip, and it's kind of stalled out. And then we were so lucky to have a tour of the hospital, and apparently they seem to be pretty satisfied with the housing market right now. So I'm just wondering if this went through at this time, would we have an overabundance of housing? Because the railroad is, you know, what's happening there, so...
I, I would point to statistically, especially in that North Platte article or the North Platte Telegraph article, that did a very good job of analyzing where we were in 2019 and where we were in the current market in 2020. We've already sold more houses in 2020 than we did in 2019. The prices of those homes were 17% higher this past year, or $24,000 per housing unit that was sold. So, and the inventory continues to decline. So we've worked really hard to build that inventory. And before the Chamber Development Corporation initiated this initial phase-one shot in the arm, the housing construction was really stagnant and dormant here. And I think it really hampered the community's ability to attract new employers and to have a comfort level with our existing employers to continue to grow their operations here. So I think this is really a critical part of economic development. And we have to not only work on job creation, but we have to work on housing at the same time because it's such, they're so interrelated. The, the fact that this program also trickled down to impact 84 local North Platte business subcontractors and suppliers that were involved in all these projects. It'll probably grow to over 100 by the time the multi-unit projects are completed because they're just now emerging and underway. We won't have this opportunity to tap into this program again for another three years, would be my guess, because that's kind of the cycle. You have two years in which to perform under your, what you put together is your application. And then you have other additional months on top of that, two years, to complete the projects. So the state more than likely will not provide this money any longer. Another thing our housing study has shown, and I've heard that discussion often at city council meetings, is we have an aging housing stock here. 75% of the houses in North Platte are 50 years old or greater, and many of them are in need of rehabilitation. What we're introducing in this program, because the state is now allowing that also, is a pilot program to where we could take older homes and rehabilitate them through this. Because Lincoln County Community Development Corporation has that experience, having been around for, since the 1990s when it was formed, we asked them if they wanted to join in partnership, that they could oversee this. They are completely project-based, to where they have to create their own income for sustainability. So that's why we introduced the, the fee to help them do it. Because rehab is very intense, takes a lot more supervision, a lot more, making sure new codes are followed and brought up to, up to standard. So that's why we thought that this was an ideal opportunity to introduce and merge those two efforts. The other thing we've added in this one is upper-floor housing in the downtown area. We think that's a new emerging market, but it's a very expensive situation for developers who want to do upper-floor housing on commercial buildings. But with all the great things going on downtown now and what we've seen with the infusion of new public capital spending down there and private expenditures and improving the business community, we now have a full occupancy in, in the heart of downtown. We've got the Pawnee being rehabilitated and so forth. We feel that that is a new emerging market, and we've included that in this program as well. I think without the incentives, sometimes developers are somewhat reluctant. It shows a community partnership that, and, and that engagement, more than the dollar amount a lot of times, shows that, you know, the community's in this partnership with them. It takes a little bit of the risk out of it for them. And I think we've got two proven success stories since 2015 that illustrate that.
Well, as you probably know, I'm a free-market person.
Well, I, and, and every, anytime anybody's ever told me that, you know, well, when do we, when do we start all these incentives? I point to the Homestead Act, the Transcontinental Railroad Act, the Kincaid Act, and that's what settled this entire company, country. And it was all incentive-based.
So do you think the micro-TIF bill will be utilized here?
Yeah, I think this helps developers look a little harder at that. Micro-TIF is good in concept. I think everybody is waiting to see how this is going to work and can it work? Because it's, it's, it's so, such a minute part of a TIF project, and you're dealing with ownership that hasn't really expended money into the properties anyway. So they're going to have to have some motivation. With what we're providing here with a $25,000 infusion to help them do that, and if they capitalize in, in conjunction with micro-TIF to do that, I think it'll, it'll get that program off dead center and move it forward.
Well, I like the downtown part of it, but I'm just a little concerned about the, that housing development out there. Nothing's happening, and so I don't know.
Well, if, if anything, that, that created more lots in the, in the community, which the inventory got pretty depleted after phase one because that was the easiest thing for developers to gravitate to because they didn't have to put the sewer, the water, the streets, purchase land. And then what, in the phase two, what we saw is there was a need then to create new subdivisions. And so part of that, I think, is related to the developer that was involved, but still the lots are there. And those lots will serve their purpose over time, just as other development, you know, that's why you have some areas where infill lots where subdivisions didn't filter out. It'll still always provide a value to the community. And I think you'll eventually see development there.
Thank you.
For, for those of you guys who are new to the council, you're going to learn that housing's my favorite subject, so I'll just warn you. Mr. Mayor, is it okay if I pass something to the council?
Please do.
To enter the record? First, I, I thank you, Gary, in the chamber. You guys, this program has just been phenomenal. This, this program has been very well-recognized across the state. And I personally think that North Platte's success with this program had a lot of input on the legislature releasing the housing trust funds back in 2017 that were used, were used for this purpose. A couple comments I'd like to make about West Phillip. I live really close to West Phillip. And then also working at Nebraska Land, we're one of the larger home mortgage providers in the community. And the thing that we constantly hear about the homes there is that people feel that the price point is too high for the square footage on those homes. That's the feedback we commonly hear. I think if they were sold a little cheaper. So frankly, maybe we didn't do enough as a community for that particular project. Or maybe its cost structure was too high, maybe wasn't financed properly for that size of project. I don't know. But what we're hearing from, what I hear from people who come in the bank who look at those homes is they think the homes are really nice, but they think they're just a little price-heavy for, for the square footage offering. If you compare, though, across the street and down at Aaron Bear and A, the houses that have sold at a price point above that, more in the 250 to 280 range, that are larger square footage, have, have sold really well in the community. So I, I don't necessarily think what's gone on there with those houses is a perfect example because everything else that's been built really undershot in the arm is sold, sold very well. There's a couple of things we're seeing right now. Millennials in particular are really notching up the demand for housing. I think the, not to tag a whole generation together, but they may have went from a generation that nobody ever thought would buy a house and the pandemic world needs a house today. And we want to remember, too, that our young people that are going off to college are living, they're living in a little nicer places than I did in college in today's... living, they're living in a little nicer places than I did in college in today's world because colleges and universities have used quality housing to attract students. And so what that's creating in the world is a, is a demand for young people, young professionals such as nurses at the hospital or whatnot, that they're looking for a certain quality of housing. In regards, I'm generally free-market spirited as well. Housing's probably where I feel a little bit differently. I'm not going to spend much time on these numbers today. You guys can contact me if you want to talk about this, but this is a brief analysis that I prepared for the Nebraska Legislature for their retreat up in Mullen that ended up getting canceled. And myself and two others were going to be there to speak about the problem with rural housing. In 2017, I served on a task force Nebraska bankers put together to study the problem with rural housing. We put together a really long report. If anybody ever wants that, call me and I'll send it to you because I think it diagnoses the problem really well. But what I want to show you with this is, very briefly, it shows three communities in Nebraska, two comparable communities that we could make the best comparison with in Colorado and Wyoming. It uses census data and it shows median income per household in our community. It shows the median value of owner-occupied housing. And then it shows the costs of housing. And I particularly want to point you to the non-mortgage costs of housing. We all know that Nebraska has a problem with our real estate taxes, insurance and general costs. I won't beat up on Pete, not too much insurance, mostly real estate taxes is the biggest issue. But our costs of non-mortgage expense on houses, because our utilities are right there or cheaper, is, is the real problem. And then you tie that back to median income, our people just can't afford new housing. So we end up with housing that keeps dropping in value and dilapidating over time. We've got to replace the stock. And so real quickly to conclude, this analysis uses a $275,000 home. Now that's an expensive home and that would typically be bought by a family above median income. But that's the barrier that was used in the trust fund grant last time and that's, that's been considered generally what the base price of non-subsidized, single-family housing is to get a desirable square footage and lot. And what this points out is that in Colorado and Wyoming, somebody of median income can afford a $275,000 home at a 30% total housing cost. And in, in North Platte, they'd be $887 a month short of that. And so we have a huge disconnect between our median income and our, and what it takes to put people into, into new housing. And so as much as I, I also agree that I'd like to get out of the incentive business in housing. Unfortunately, we have a conundrum going on between wages and the cost of housing and the availability of other housing that if we don't subsidize housing, I think new construction, we're going to lose critical infrastructure. That's really going to be an impediment to getting jobs and creating growth in the community. And so I do appreciate the concerns about free market, but what I love about Shot in the Arm is its simplicity. It was designed because of, we were talking about how all this started is a bunch of us were at the table, talking about that, how much sales tax you pay when you build a home. Most people don't realize how much sales tax you pay. If materials are 40% of a job, which is, which is in the range of average, you're going to pay sales tax on 40% of a home value. Well, then when you're, of course, the guy who hired the crews, he's going to pay payroll tax and state tax and all that. And then when you're done, you get to pay 2% per year in real estate taxes on it for the rest, through the rest of your life. So housing is highly taxed and it has huge economic impact toward the Quality Growth Fund. So the idea was if we could just give these builders a little bit of their tax bill back, they can then take that money. And if, if you're building a spec home, you're not worried about if you're going to sell it, you're worried about when you're going to sell it and how much, and particularly when. And the, most of the builders I've talked to say that this little bit of money gives them the ability to hold the homes long enough to where they can try to get their price out of it to either make a profit or get, get above break even. To end, I really like the enhancements you guys made with the Canton District and the rehabilitation program because micro TIF, I'm excited about, but micro TIF provides no initial benefit for a project. It only provides a longer-term tax freeze basically for the particular property and the future property owner. And so I think this could be complemented with it really well because it would help bring a little bit of funding for the actual renovation project. Probably use my three minutes, but thank you.
A little more, I think, but that's okay.
I, I won't do that very often, so thank you.
We have other comments. Mr. Reeker, you have the floor.
Mr. Pearson, I too want to thank you for all that you do. I, would you tell me again, or tell us again, who's partnering with you on this?
And I'm glad you brought that up, Ed, because I meant to answer Donna more directly when she said to her the hospital, but they're our greatest contributor for our local partner in this program. They felt it is so critically important to what they do and where they're going and growing their employment, their services here, that they're by far and away our, our best contributor. And then it would be our economic incentive business partners with the chamber and of course, asking the city to join in that partnership and then the state of Nebraska would provide the $500,000 that the legislature has authorized.
So am I to understand that the UP is not contributing this go-around?
The, I have not directly asked the Union Pacific yet because the program we applied under was kind of a new program that they had and we have not closed out our old program because all the projects aren't completed yet. And one of the requirements with that was we had to have a complete closeout in order to apply for more funds from the same program. I'm still going to ask the question.
You mean apply to the UP?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. For, for that particular, just knowing what their ground rules were. With the state of Nebraska, what they've said is if we provide a full report where we're at with all our projects, if we have all of our previous funding allocation under contract with, with projects, they would then consider that fact that you're still eligible to apply for this new funding. That was not the case with the UP program.
Well, my, my comment that I made about the other proposal for quality growth, I guess, still holds true. I am concerned. You and I've had some discussions about potential companies that want to come to our town, which is wonderful. It's the best news I've heard for years. And I think we've got a rail park out there that's just kind of waiting to be filled I guess my question is, and I think you kind of alluded to this when you said it wasn't so much the amount of money that the city gave, is the fact that we actually showed an interest and assisted. And so I guess I would propose, and I don't know if I need to make a motion, probably do.
There's currently a motion on the table that I believe you made.
Can I make an amendment to the motion?
I made it.
Oh, excuse me, Pete made it, I'm sorry. So you could, Terry, help us out here. You could opt to table or you could do anything. Or you could ask Mr. Vols to retract his motion if you'd like to propose something different.
Okay. I guess where I was going with that is, is maybe we should instead of, I think it was $250,000 if I'm not mistaken.
And I, I need to add this, Ed, before you make your, your motion, is that we have to have 50% local match. So if the city doesn't provide their 50%, of the 50% local, then we go have to go, we, we're going to have to go find that additional funding before we're able to apply.
And what's the deadline, Gary?
We have to have the full-blown applications in by January 27th or 28th, somewhere in there. But it's, it's a, obviously there's a lot more details to that because you have to have actual letters of commitment and so forth, so. And we have been like a 50/50 partner in these other two programs. I, in fact, I brought, this is kind of on all the projects, first go-around, that's the sign that was by each one of the projects. It, you know, it was the chamber and the city were the partners on that. And then this last go-around, it obviously was more. But that's a, it's a great recognition tool that we're, we're all partners in making this thing work, so.
Well, I guess, I understand your motivation. I think it's a valid motivation. I, I guess I am concerned about the fact that with these new entities that are looking to come to our town, plus we've had a big property in our community that just changed hands, that's probably going to have to, let me restate that, that's probably going to be requesting some Quality Growth Funds for maybe rehabilitation. I'm concerned still that if we take a lot of money out of here, we won't have money to help with the bigger projects that we, we've been working so diligently to accomplish. And I guess I would make a motion to amend the $250,000 to $150,000.
It has to be 50% airing, right?
Our application has to show 50% partnership from the community partners. But now the city's a 50% partner of the local part of it.
But if my understanding correctly, Gary, if we back ours up to 150 instead of 250, the other partners or additional partners would have to come forward to make up the difference.
That is correct. If we want to apply for a million dollars.
Right.
You know, you don't have to apply for a million, but you know, it's a, it's a lot of time and effort put into this program if you're not going to have some kind of significant.
Hey, Gary, would you stand up so we can hear what you're saying there?
Yeah, it's just, you know, we, we feel that like the million-dollar application is, is probably kind of the minimum threshold we want to pursue just because of all the energy and effort that goes into this and we now have more programs. You got the rehab, you got, you've got the upper floor in addition to the other ones. It's important we keep that other cycle going, we felt. So the mixture just won't work as well if we don't apply for at least a million. But you know, the return on investment is, is rather significant. Like, we now know the valuation of those first 48 units that were done in phase one. That produced $10 million in new value into the community and that generated a lot of new property tax for the community as well. The second phase will obviously be even greater than that. And so it, it all perpetuates itself. Plus, you look at the sales tax that was generated from the construction activity on those projects and that was rather significant. So that's a replenishment of some of those funds. I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm just giving you my sales pitch, Ed. Before I, in case this is the last time I'm up here, I just wanted to congratulate the, the new council members, look forward to working with all of you on some pretty exciting projects coming forward in 2021.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Hey, guys, hold on a second. We, we have, we have a motion.
Oh, excuse me.
And we're, we're currently in hold until that motion is resolved in some form, so. There is no second at this moment.
So if we don't get a second, can we continue the conversation?
We can, but this motion will die.
Can you restate it later?
He could, yes.
Okay.
I'll, I'll just go ahead and rescind my motion.
Okay, motion rescinded by Mr. Reeker. Discussion may continue. Mr. Woods, you have the floor.
I've heard we have a really hot housing market. Prices are high. I know this because I look at houses all the time to buy and, and yes, they are and they're, they're very high-priced. But the, the market's hot. I have a friend who's into the real estate market and I have not investigated this, so he's generally pretty on, but he told me that houses out the lake that, that are selling, that one out of three people are from California buying. Now, like I said, I, it's just a comment, I haven't investigated it. If it's true, well, they don't know the market and they're going to pay more than they should, which is going to raise prices. But my main thing is market is hot, it's doing well. To me, you use incentives when it's not. Interest rates are nothing now for homes. I'm thinking along the same lines as Ed too, as far as saving the money for other projects. And of course, we all know how I feel about giving money to people. If the market's so hot and there are homes being built, and most of them are, it seems to be of the higher end and they're selling well. So, you know, I would be against giving the builder money to incentivize homes I think they could build anyway.
Thank you. I would just like to make a quick comment. Are you? I agree with what you guys are saying. But in this case, and we do have limited funding here available to us with the Quality Growth Fund. But one of the critical aspects we need to do in order to get prospective businesses into town is clean up our business and take care of our infrastructure. Okay? So this $250,000 equates to a million dollars that we can reinvest into our community. That's 25%. So I think that is a bargain at twice the price. So I personally am willing to invest the $250,000 in order us, in order for us to continue to improve our housing. As it's been stated numerous times, we do need to continue the flow of housing. You can't turn that spigot on and off. We did that a number of years back and that's what brought us into a decline, in my opinion. And I think that could be based with fact. So I think this is a worthwhile investment to reinvest in our community and our infrastructure with housing. That's how I look at it. I appreciate everybody's comments, but that's where I'm going with that. So thank you very much.
I just want to make a comment. You know, anytime the interest rates are low, the prices go up. I mean, that's just economics, that's the way it works. And just if this doesn't go through tonight, it doesn't, I don't think mean that there won't be any building of, I mean, I, I just don't think we're going to come to a stop. That's just my comment.
I do feel compelled to draw one quick correlation. Growing communities have an abundance of housing. They don't have a competitive housing market, they have an abundance of housing. Because as you bring people to your community, they have to have somewhere to live or they won't come. It's quite that simple. So by having an inadequate housing supply, we will actually hamper our ability to attract businesses. As I campaigned heavily on attracting businesses of all kinds to this community, I believe that this is something that we need to strongly consider as a council from the business perspective. If we don't have housing, we won't get people. In order for our community to get many of the things they want, many of the things that we all heard when we were campaigning, we must have houses. It's that simple. This is the most efficient way to do it in our world today. It may not be the situation in two or three years from now, but today it is. Donna, you're right, the hospital hasn't had housing presented as such an issue to us in 2020. We also haven't been able to hire near the volume of people we normally would have planned to in 2020. We haven't recruited near the physicians and things that we would have typically. I can tell you that. I, I was in a meeting just today where that was being discussed. It's because of COVID-19, that's just simply the reason, that's all there is to it. So I do think that regardless of where you stand on this issue, you need to consider that this, this issue of housing directly correlates to our community's ability to attract businesses of all types, those being contemplated right now. They will look at housing as those folks attempt to come to our community. And if we don't have it and it's not on its way, it may cause us a problem. Do we have any other comments? Yes, Donna?
I just have a question. Does anyone have any projects, projections of the future draw on the Quality Growth Fund account? I mean, I mean, that's really probably pretty difficult to answer, but.
Carrie, do you have any, any words on that question?
Well, we're working with a number of active prospects and I, I would give them a better-than-average chance of, of happening. And anything can always derail a project. But also keep in mind that even But also keep in mind that even if there's a funding commitment made to a project, sometimes that doesn't have to be paid, you know, right up front. It could be paid off of performance levels as they're reached. So the community does have some time to accumulate more funds. The thing, or the program that was adopted by the public allows for up to $650,000 of new funds each year. We're expecting another, in March, I believe, an infusion of funds into the, into the program when the old program expires. That's kind of the cutoff date of it. So there's potentially another $300,000 plus coming in at that point. And so you can sometimes make obligations knowing that the funding is gonna be there, and it's an understanding with the company. But there will be more requests. I mean, and that's the whole purpose, what our efforts are, is to try to bring those types of jobs and payrolls to that. But I can tell you with these companies, the major companies we're working with, there are other programs that are far more, incentive programs that are far more valuable to them than just quality growth in those cases, because they're, they're major type of employment and investment types of projects.
Thank you.
Very quick follow-up comment on that is that the Nebraska Imagine Act was just passed this last year and enacted, enacts January 1. And it is significantly better, it is a significantly better economic package for a town like North Platte to be able to attract high-quality employers who will be looking at bringing higher-paid employees who will be looking for housing. And so if you haven't spent time reading that act or the comparison to the Evange Act, I'd encourage you to do that, because we're gonna have a lot better, we're gonna have a lot better state package to bring, to put in the arsenal at the chamber here, which I'm very excited about.
I presume that every, every other community, our state, will have access to those same types of funds. So we're still gonna be in a very competitive situation regardless of what, what may be new coming down the horizon. Gary, I still come back to the reduction. How long does it take to, to work with these other entities to develop, to secure additional funding? I mean, you say you've got to have these papers in, in a month, basically is what I understood.
Whatever amount that the city would cut requests by, obviously, we'll have, we'll have to go out and get those funding commitments in a very short period of time. Bottom line, to have the security of knowing. And a lot of times, they have processes they have to go through. Part of the reason, we didn't find out that we would, you know, the legislature had a delayed session. We didn't get a direct answer whether we'd be eligible to apply until late in the game, that there was a provision that as long as you provide, because we hadn't closed out the old program yet. So it's just, you know, it's all those rolling factors. And then we gotta make sure that our board of directors is on board with doing another round of it. And, because it is, it's very, there's a lot of time commitment as well, you know, from, from our, our staff and our organizations.
If memory serves me right, we've got about 1.7 million, is that right, in quality growths?
Yes, and that, those are unencumbered. That doesn't mean all of the encumbered funds may actually come to be, but they are at this point encumbered, yes.
And, and you said we're looking at $300,000 in March or something like that?
Kind of what you're. You said there's two, you said there's two six-month periods this time because of the transition between the end of the last 10 years of QGF and the start of the new. So it still adds up to 650 this year, it was just 325 by March and 325 by September. That's what, that's what you have explained to me about how.
Yeah, because this, that old program has to sunset before the new one begins, so.
So we're gonna have, so let's say we don't give any more money away. The 1st of March, we're gonna have roughly $2 million in our piggy bank. And, and we gave a million dollars, if memory serves me correctly, to Chief.
Yes, but that, that's counted as encumbered funds.
So that's not, that's over and above the million seven?
All of those programs that have not drawn their funds down yet, their intention is to draw it down, Ed, but it's already factored in the fact that it's encumbered. So the 1.7 or would be almost 2 million by the time this program ends, that is funds that have no obligation to them at all at this point.
And, and that was, I, I, okay, I understand it. So having.
And there might be some outstanding loans that are being repaid at the same time, too, so.
So it's not out of reason for, for me, anyway, to think that we have XYZ company that wants to come to town, and it looks really attractive for us, and, and we want to help them, that we could realistically spend a million bucks. We've done it once.
Yep.
And so if we spend a million bucks, now we're down to a million. And if we give you $250,000, now we're down to 750.
I understand totally what you're saying, Ed. I'd love to have a $10 million pot, you know, to make our life.
I'm just concerned, and I want to be frugal, and I want to be, you know, I want to do it right, and whatever right is, I don't know. But those are my thoughts.
Yeah, but I think everybody right now, and it certainly wasn't this way five years ago, that the companies we were talking to, they're more comfortable with the housing market in North Platte right now, and they're feeling good about it. And so it's not to deter, it was back then. And I just don't want to see the community get back to that point.
Is it realistic to think that you could recover another $150,000 in a limited timeframe?
You mean 100?
Yes, I'm sorry, 100, I'm sorry.
100, well, you know, that's, my job is to perform.
I'm just asking, is it realistic?
Yep, I, well, you know, I'd like to begin working on the application tomorrow, knowing that that's where my, my effort needs to be, rather than go out and trying to hustle dollars during a pandemic year that everybody has been suffering through, and holiday season, and, you know, all, all of those factors. And the fact that, you know, businesses just can't arbitrarily say, hey, I'm gonna give you another so much money, so.
Thank you.
Okay, let's vote.
Could, could you clarify just what we're voting on? Are we voting on the original motion?
At this point, we'd be voting on the original motion, which was as described by Mr. Vols. Did anyone like it to be read back? Or you understand that it's what was in the book, is in the book, excuse me? Okay, let's vote, please. Motion passes five to two. Thank you, everyone. Number nine. Public hearing in action on recommendation by the North Platte Planning Commission for approval of an application by James Hassett for a conditional use permit to allow living quarters situated in an office building in a B-2 highway commercial district located at 221 West 11th Street. We would need a motion to move forward.
Yeah. I move that we find that the request for a conditional use permit to allow living quarters situated in an office building located at 221 West 11th Street meets the minimum standards stated in the North Platte Code of Ordinances, Section 156-322, and approve and grant the conditional use permit requested, with the condition all elements of the application are complied with and all conditions. Let's see, Trimmer, I need to go ahead and just continue, right? If I want to follow what the book suggests, is that correct?
Judy, would you clarify, please?
I know we always get confused on this.
Yeah, I think I need to clarify, we need to hold a public hearing first before we do a motion.
Oh, I apologize.
I'll, I'll halt and withdraw my motion, thank you.
Okay, in that case, Brandon's second mistake as mayor, sorry. I know. Okay, I believe we need a motion to have a public hearing, is that correct? Okay, well. Let's have a public hearing, everyone. We'll now open the public hearing.
Is Mr. Hassett here?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I can try and answer a question.
Yeah, you might be able to answer this, Judy. Looking at that, looking at that property, that is the burned-up house there, is that correct?
Mayor Callahere, Councilman Vols, yes, that is correct. There is a house there that is in a pretty bad way. And then also a building that is to the north of that. And what his thoughts are is to rehab the existing home and make that an office building.
Hey Judy, would you get a little closer to the mic, please?
Sorry.
Thank you.
And make that an office building slash residential unit. So he is going to rehab the existing house that is on there.
Okay, that was my main question, thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
A motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, Lucas, second, Rieker. Vote to close the public hearing or not, please. That motion passes seven, excuse me, seven to zero.
I think I remember how to do this now, after seeing Judy's face, so we're gonna give it another shot, okay? I move that we find the request for a conditional use permit to allow living quarters situated in an office building located at 221 West 11th Street meets the minimum standards stated in the North Platte Code of Ordinances, Section 156-322, and approve and grant the conditional use permit requested, with the condition all elements in the application are complied with, based on the following factual findings. One, the use shall conform to all applicable ordinances, laws, and regulations of any governmental jurisdiction. Two, the use shall have adequate water, sewer, and drainage facilities. Three, ingress and egress cell shall be so designated as to minimize traffic congestion in public streets. Four, the use shall, in all other respects, conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. Five, the use shall be in harmony with the character of the area and the most appropriate use of land.
We have a motion and a second? Is that Mr. Carmen seconded? Motion by Lucas, second by Carmen. Discussion. Mr. Rieker, you have the floor.
Is there any time limit on how long it might take to rebuild this house?
Mayor Callahere, Councilman Rieker, we do have, he would come and get a building permit, of course, and we do have generally a 12-month timeframe with those building permits. He is a retired contractor, so he does have the ability to rehab that. We're fairly confident that he can get that accomplished.
How long has, how long has the house been in this, this repair?
Oh, gosh, I, I don't know that answer.
A long time?
I would have to go back and look, it's been quite some time.
So we've never taken on, we've never taken action on this property before in this burned condition? As far as declaring it uninhabitable like we did the house on, on 12th Street?
Mayor Callahere, Councilman Rieker, not to my knowledge, we did not. It has not been condemned, I don't believe that it was on our condemnation list. But it was inspected, probably had some issues that it needed to deal with. But yes, he has had that in ownership for a while and has been working on it periodically, doing the building that's to the north, and then working on moving forward with this.
I guess I'm concerned that if it's been in that condition for a long time, do we have any guarantee that it's gonna be repaired?
Well, Councilman Rieker, I guess it's just his word that he's, that's what his plan is. He is getting the permit. I mean, he would have gotten the permit already had he been able to do so. But he couldn't do that because he couldn't build the residential structure in a commercial district without getting the conditional use. So he's prepared to move forward.
I, I don't think the question, Councilman Rieker, is whether or not the individual is going to repair. The question before you is the conditional use permit.
Judy, in the event that we granted this permit, would it not be inspected upon completion?
Mayor, Mayor Callahere, yes, that would be correct. It would be inspected during construction on different occasions, depending on, you know, what process they were in at the front. But yes, it would have inspections throughout construction, and then a final certificate of occupancy would be issued.
Thank you. We have other questions on this? I can see that Councilwoman Tryon has a question.
I just need to be educated, probably. If, if this permit is issued and nothing happens to the property, what happens to that permit? Does it expire at some point, or?
Mayor Callahere, Councilwoman Tryon, yes, this is a conditional use. The conditional use is good for a year. They are supposed to start something. You do have the power as, as council to go back if nothing is ever done, to revoke the conditional use permit. But they do have a year to at least start something.
And it's monitored by?
It would be monitored by our department, the building inspectors mostly. But yes, and, and like I said, with this gentleman, he is ready and prepared to pull the permit as soon as a yes vote would, would be realized.
Thank you.
Can I make a quick comment?
Mr. Woods, you have the floor.
I've worked with Jim Hassett for years, not recently, but he owned a lot of rental properties. I did a lot of work for him. You know, it's just my opinion, and how far much, he's a pretty good guy, knows what he's doing. And I, I really think he's probably gonna do it, you know, and be good for the city, raise the, raise the tax rate there, make some more money.
Other questions on this issue? Okay, please vote. The motion passes seven to zero. Got to watch out for those public hearings. Thank you, we'll highlight those, thanks, ma'am.
It's okay, we're getting educated.
I do want to make a quick comment that I forgot to make before we started this meeting, and that we are, we, the council, and, and we'll begin working a little more on being a little closer, or a little better at following Robert's rules of orders. And Judy is kindly helping us out by using the correct kind of address. So the shock that I saw in Mr. Rieker's face when she did it, I thought maybe I should explain what's going on. So I apologize, Judy, I told you I'd do that upfront, and then I forgot, so my apologies. Third mistake as mayor, so, okay.
I had that coming.
Yeah, that's probably so, okay. Number 10. Final reading to adopt ordinance number 4049 to rezone certain lands from an R2 dwelling district to an I-1 light industrial district located at 720 West Front Street and 617 North Oak Street.
Mayor Callahere, would you like me to read the ordinance?
Yes, please do, Mr. Kibben.
An ordinance of the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, rezoning the north 76 feet of Lot 4, Block 95, original town of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and the south 56 feet of Lot 4, Block 95, original town of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, from an R2 dwelling district to an I-1 industrial district, repealing all ordinances or port, or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Thank you, Mr. Kibben. Do we have a motion on this issue?
I move to adopt ordinance number 4049 to rezone certain land from an R2 dwelling district to an I-1 light industrial district on final reading.
Second.
Motion, Garrick, second, Rieker. Do we have discussions or question on this issue? Seeing none, please vote. The issue passes six to one. Thank you, everyone. Number 11. Authorize the mayor to renegotiate the terms and/or terminate the memorandum of understanding between the City of North Platte and West Central Health Department.
I move to authorize the mayor to renegotiate the terms and/or terminate the memorandum of understanding between the City of North Platte and the West Central District Health Department.
Second.
Motion Garrick, second, Reeker. Discussion. Just so you're all aware, Shannon Vanderheiden is here from West Central. I have told her that she could address us for a few minutes. If you'd like to ask questions directly of her, if you would like to discuss for a moment first, what's the pleasure of the council? Hearing none, I'll ask Shannon to address us quickly. Shannon, about five minutes or so, please, or less, whichever you prefer.
I can do it in one.
Okay, thank you. Please say who you are and such.
Absolutely. Shannon Vanderheiden, Executive Director of West Central District Health Department, and I'm a resident here in North Platte. So, Mayor, probably the first thing I want to make sure that we bring to light is the purpose of the memorandum of understanding. So the purpose of the memorandum of understanding truly is about collaboration and partnership, nothing more, nothing less. It's very important that we have a relationship with our city, that the health department has a relationship with our city, along with villages and our counties within our six-county district. And that is what this memorandum of understanding is about. The other thing that I would be happy to address is any misconceptions, false information about what the memorandum of understanding is, would welcome any of those types of questions. And any decision that is made regarding the memorandum of understanding this evening, I hope that it's based off of truthful information and anything that I can bring to the table to help clear up some of the misconceptions around that.
Okay. Do you have more words? Sorry.
Just one more.
I would just agree with you, sorry.
So the first three paragraphs of the memorandum of understanding speaks to the health department's role as a health department, with or without the memorandum. So 71-501 and 71-1626 through 71-36 describes the role of public health departments in the state of Nebraska. And our role is the, to mitigate the spread of disease. Having a memorandum of understanding, again, was simply to show the partnership and relationship that we have with our city in doing mitigation of disease. We've done that since the formation of health departments for us in this area. The West Central District Health Department was formed back in 2000. And again, per state statutes, that's one of our duties as a health department to make sure we're mitigating this disease. And I would welcome any questions.
Before we continue with discussion, I just want to remind everyone in the room that this is a discussion about the city's memorandum with the West Central Health District. This is not a referendum on the COVID-19 experience. This is not a referendum on the performance of West Central Health District. This is about the memorandum. If people stray in their comments, I will hold them out of order. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Shannon while she has the microphone? Mr. Lucas, you have the floor.
Yeah, first, thank you for all your tireless work this year. The community, even though we don't always express our concerns about certain items, I think we really do appreciate it. My question is, you guys have other communities within your district. I think we're the largest community within your district, correct, by quite some bit? Do you have different relationships with any other communities? Or is every community in your district under, in the exact same memo of understanding of what the City of North Platte is?
Councilman, that's a great question, and yes, we do. So we have very similar memorandums of understanding with villages and also with our six counties.
Do, do any of them have a different process for complaint handling, oversight, or just the general management of the relationship?
You're talking about the relationship with public health. As far as the memorandum of understanding, I just want to clarify the question, not understanding.
Yeah, for example, and maybe even doesn't have to be specific to your health district. I'm trying to understand, maybe you can just help educate me on what's the general environment across the state on the relationship between, between cities and health districts? Are, are they typically this simple, or do they often have complex requirements such as annual reporting? Or complaint process is an example, or just, I'm just trying to learn more about what these relationships exist like in other communities.
Okay, I'm gonna try to, to answer that question. So district health departments in the state of Nebraska look a little different. So back in 2000, Nebraska took the tobacco lawsuit dollars and said, "We want to put back into our state using these dollars towards health." So, towards health. So at that particular time, counties were asked to look at forming district health departments. Prior to that, there were not district health departments. There were a few sprinkled across the state. Very few counties were covered. Now as a state, all 93 counties are covered, covered under a district health department. So we are one of the district health departments. We're one of 18. There are a couple of cities like Lincoln and Omaha that are city-county health departments. But again, it goes back to that statute that dictates what can form that. So we are a health department that falls within a district health department, meaning you have to have three contiguous counties together and you have to have a population of greater than 30,000. So that's what dictates a district health department. As far as reporting, so we report to the legislature every year on an annual basis. We report out on our 692 funding, which is the funding from the healthcare cash fund that, from the tobacco lawsuit settlement dollars, and that's what we report back out. When we look at our grants that we have, which is in addition to that healthcare cash fund, we report out to each grant that we have with the State Department. That could be a grant directly from the state, or that could be funding that is a trickle-down from the federal government. I don't, did that answer your question?
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, you bet.
Mr. Bowles, you have the floor.
Hi, Ms. Vanderheiden. Thank you for coming, and I want to mirror ties thanks for your tireless effort during this process. None of us asked for this, and you've by far taken the brunt. The West Central Health District has a board that governs it, correct?
That is correct.
And if you wouldn't mind, would you share the makeup of your board? And I think most of us know, but just go ahead for the record and go ahead and share the makeup of the board. And if you would, how the board, how you and the board interact, i.e., the meetings you've had, any additional meetings, and just kinda the structure, and if they're an advisory board or a governing board or that?
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Yes, would be happy to. So the Board of Health is a governing board, again, per the state statutes that I had mentioned earlier. The makeup of that board is we have to have a county commissioner from each county that represents our six counties. We also have to have a spirited person that is from each of those counties. And then in addition to that, we have a physician and a dentist that has to sit on our board. As far-
Let me ask a question. What's a spirited person? Somebody that's alive, I presume.
It's an interesting term, but that's the term that's used in state statute. And it just simply means a community member from that county. So that spirited person is actually first appointed at the county board level, and then that person is brought to the Board of Health level and voted on as a Board of Health member as well. But it starts at the county level. As far as meetings, so we meet, we have to meet quarterly at least, and that is what we do. We have to follow Robert's rules as well, and again, it is a governing board, not an advisory board.
And have you had any additional meetings during this period, during this experience for the past eight months?
We've done our typical meetings. We might have had one extra meeting, but I still work very closely with my board members. So for example, in the last few weeks, I've had a few of them helping us try to locate a place that where my staff are not out in the elements as they're doing swabbing for Test Nebraska. They've helped a lot with that. I talk to my medical provider quite a lot. The other piece that's important that I don't think people realize is there's a lot of communication and conversations across our state. So while we are a decentralized state as far as public health, we work very closely with our state partners. Through this whole pandemic, we've worked closely with Department of Education, with all the other health directors across the state. Our association is called NALID, which is Nebraska Association of Local Health Directors. We do a lot of work collaboratively so that we, we can address the issues at hand together and not in silos.
Thank you very much.
Do we have other questions for Shannon? Okay, thank you, Shannon.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you being here. Do we have any further discussion on this issue? I think Ed's receiving the definition of a spirited person. Okay, okay. Ed qualifies as spirited.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to clarify the decision at hand here. And the decision at hand is just, we have an option of terminating the memorandum with West Central Health District or continuing the memorandum with West Central Health District. Either way, our agreement with West Central Health District continues through April 7th.
That's correct.
If we choose to terminate and have you renegotiate our memorandum, that's just allowing us a time, because the deadline here is January 7th, correct? So we just have to make a decision by January 7th in order to do this. And all that, all we're doing here is allowing you to renegotiate to see if there might be an enhanced methodology for us to work in cooperation with West Central Health District. Am I paraphrasing there correctly?
I believe that is, that is correct. And just a point of clarification, I believe it's January 6th. Actually, we have to make this decision by, I made a mistake there, so that's number four. Having a rough night here, so, okay. Yeah, that's right. Number of mayor mistakes on this board. Okay, we're good. Okay, so yes, Mr. Lucas, go ahead.
Mayor, just a couple of quick comments. You know, in, in the last go-around in April, I was concerned about this memo, and my concerns really came from how, from how quickly it was occurring. And I just frankly felt that we needed to spend a little more time vetting it out and defining this relationship. I guess I, I like the idea of providing them notice and moving into the period of relooking at all this, but I also do appreciate the relationship we have with West Central and appreciate what the state was trying to accomplish back in 2000, as you look at some of the history on that. And so I'm, I'm hoping this is a collaboration and a renegotiation, but I also understand that, that we need to be in position to, to terminate, to properly negotiate too. And so I'm in favor of, of getting this decision made tonight on making this notice step. But my hope is, is that collaboration and renegotiation will be what occurs between now and when we see that again.
Do we have other questions or comments on this issue? Okay, everyone, let's vote. Motion passes seven to nothing. Okay. Working up a sweat up here, okay. Number 12. Are you ready over there, Merrily? Here we go, okay. Approve the contract with Great Plains Health to provide transportation services. We would need a motion before we can have a discussion on this, so.
I move to adopt a contract with Great Plains Health to provide transportation services.
Second.
Okay, motion Reeker, second Lucas. Do we have discussion on this issue? We have Merrily who, and Lane, I believe, who worked collaboratively to negotiate the contract with Great Plains Health, is that correct? Lane's deferring to Merrily, so she could answer questions on this issue, and Mr. Kibbin, do you have anything to contribute here? Okay, okay.
Mayor, if I would, I'd like to abstain from this vote and discussion based on my relationship with Great Plains Health, so.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Woods, what can we do for you? Ah! I apologize. Old Mark, I got you in trouble. I'm sorry. That's number five. Mrs. Tryon, I apologize. We'll be more serious about these in the future, I promise.
That's okay, that's okay. I just have a couple of questions for Merrily.
Merrily, if you'd come up to the mic, please.
Thank you for calling. That was informational, but then since our conversation, of course, I've come up with some more questions. And let's see, because then I also picked up this packet, and as I'm reading through it, I was just thinking it was Sunday that you were doing the service from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., but it looks like to me it's during the other six days of the week, it's until 12:30. Is that?
Right, there's, so it's a total of 37 hours, excuse me. Mayor Kelleher, Councilwoman Tryon.
Good job, Merrily, good job.
Little slow. Okay, yes, so if you're, are you unclear on the hours that we're doing?
Well, right, that is one question, because on the internet, on the website, it says services for the buses closes at 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday?
Well, that was, let me say one statement, that was during COVID, and we keep pushing that time back when need arises to recoup our, our customers. And so now we are running till 7:00 and 8:00 o'clock.
Oh, okay.
So we need to change that.
Okay, well, that helps a little bit, because I was doing the math and I'm going, this is only 22 hours a week.
Yeah, so we are, we have pushed back Monday through Friday because we have people that need to be picked up at work.
So you're doing it later, is what you're saying?
Our normal hours are 8:00 p.m.
Oh, okay.
And during COVID, we backed up to 6:00 o'clock.
But we're back to 8:00 now?
We're back to 8:00, 7:00 and 8:00, depending on, you know, who needs a ride.
Okay, okay. Let's see, so then, well, my math is all wrong on here then.
I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay. No, I was just trying to figure out, because you know, we talked about as on-call, that they would be paid the same rate, which I didn't know what that rate was, and I don't know if that's something you've determined.
Just depending on, it's, it's not, it's in the middle of the pay scale, probably step B.
I don't know what step B is.
Which is 16, no, excuse me, 1572.
Really? Okay, well.
In order to, you know, get people to work nights and weekends.
That's kinda what you have to pay, huh? Even though they're sitting at home waiting for their pager to go off.
Well, we're hoping that they're gonna be busy.
Well, I know.
You know, the first, you know, they, they have done an analysis of how busy, you know, they think that we're, would be. And that's, this is how we came up with these hours.
Okay, well, my math is all wrong.
So we've been negotiating on these times for quite a while.
Okay, so, so, okay, so the profit there isn't looking as good as I thought it was gonna look.
It's still a good profit.
Well, that's, yeah, I kinda figured it is. So then that brings up the other question. So with this, I think it's supposed, if it passes, will take effect this January-
January 2nd.
For two years.
Right, correct.
Right, even that has to be changed in here because they didn't change the year, I don't think. So then, since their budget has already been submitted and approved and whatnot, so if this passes and this additional income comes in, does it come in to who? To her department? And then is her budget reduced by that much? Or how does that part of it work, is my question, I guess?
Mayor Kelleher and councilperson Tryon. It will come into our department and then go into the general fund. So it's a positive revenue stream, that's a new revenue stream, so. So it's, and then plus, like I said in the packet there, when you have an outside contract, it takes away what we have to pay, our percentage to the state and federal government. So it's kind of a double bonus for us.
Okay, well, I just, I-
And it's providing some much-needed transportation for the hospital. That's what I want to point out, because once we close and the taxi company closes, they have no way to get people that are discharged from the hospital at night.
Right, yes. I did speak to the cab company, and I really appreciate you, because they said that, you know, that you had contacted them and had visited about this.
Yeah, we've got a good working relationship.
Yes, and I'm really, I'm really glad about that. So I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
Merrily?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions.
Uh-huh.
The 1572, that's their, their hourly wage, the employee.
Right, if that's-
Okay. Now, I don't know about state-city employees. Do you have to pay all the FICA taxes, unemployment?
Yeah, that was all figured in the budget.
And all that?
Mm-hmm.
You've already included that in the 1572?
It's already in the budget, yeah. What, in deriving that figure that we needed from Great Plains Health, it was, all that was figured into it.
Okay, I'm kind of dense. So actually, they're making about $10 an hour, is what you're paying them?
Merrily, Councilman Woods, we're talking about two different things here. You're talking wages, and Dawn is in the hall. I see her, so if I misspeak, please come in and correct me. At 1572, you're talking about wages. The other part of this process is establishing a budget, which is all-inclusive of the secondary expenses. So the hourly wage, if you throw in the benefit package or FICA Suda, would be greater than that, $15.72, if I said that correctly.
Right, I'm just trying to come to the actual amount that we're paying for this. You know, it may be in a different part of the budget, but it still has to be figured in.
We're paying between-
How we're going to break on this. Am I wrong on that? I mean-
Councilman Woods, our expenses for employees anticipated to be around $1,700 the first month and $1,600 every month thereafter.
Can I just say something? I think what Mark's trying to figure out, and I'm guessing that it would be the hourly wage that the city would pay plus .0765 for the employee, employer's portion of FICA.
Well, yeah, the match.
Yeah, right, the match.
And then what you have to pay to unemployment insurance, and what you have to pay-
Oh, that's true, yeah.
To workman's compensation. I mean, what it costs, I mean, the hourly wage of an employee is-
You'll be up to $20.
Isn't the total cost to the employer. You, I mean, you all know what I'm saying.
It's all factored in.
But I think Mark has won.
Not in that $15.72.
Right, not at all.
Not at all.
Okay.
Budgeted.
Well, what, so I'm just making a guesstimate of it costs the city about $20 an hour. I haven't had payroll in a long time, so I'm kind of-
I think I can, maybe I can assist with this. The additional, if you're calculating this as a business and considering a net profit margin, our profit margin is 44%.
Okay. That answers my question.
Thank you, Mr. Kibben, for putting that that way.
Mr. Reeker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, how am I supposed to address you?
You can just ask your question. That's okay. Or you could say Merrily.
Nicely, please.
Merrily, I guess, just as a point of clarification on terms, it does appear that there's a discrepancy in here. It says for two, a two-year period, but the dates are January 2, 2021, and terminating January 2, 2022. Do we need to correct that date in this contract as part of our, part of our motion?
Mr. Reeker, I don't, Councilman Reeker, I don't believe you need to correct the language in there before we execute it. We will correct that language.
Okay.
Merrily, quick question is, do you see, how will you guys entertain requests for off-hours transportation that doesn't tie to the hospital, but may be within your general hour parameters during this program?
Mayor Kibben, or Mayor-
Kelleher.
Kelleher, Councilman Lucas. I'm not sure I understand the question. So you're saying, like, if we get another person that wants to ride the transit during these times, how are we going to handle it?
Yeah, if you've decided that yet.
We talked about that. I think the hospital has been very good at working with the gal that I've been working with for several months on this. If there's a need out there, and they don't have anybody that they foresee is going to be, you know, being discharged in that two-hour period, and there's another need, we'll, we've kind of done a gentleman's agreement that we'll take care of that need.
Thank you.
Because if we're going to be out there till 12:30, and somebody needs something, we'll be there.
Mrs. Tryon, you have the floor.
I have one more question. So the hospital is going to pay, per the contract, X number dollars. I guess maybe this isn't even in your purview, but I just wondered who ultimately is going to pay for this? Does the hospital bill the patient, or?
No, they're not. They're not. They would like to, if the patient can't afford it,
Right.
we will charge the normal fee, and then we'll take it off of what the monthly fee is. But if they can't, you know, and typically speaking, a lot of times, these are people that may be in a rollover accident, you know, and lost their car, and, you know, were brought there by the ambulance, and then they need a ride back to the motel that they're staying at, you know. So there's all kinds of circumstances.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Let's vote. Five to one, motion passes. Number 13. Authorize the sale of vehicles and equipment on public surplus.com and authorize the mayor to sign all documents for the city.
I move to authorize the sale of vehicles and equipment on public surplus.com and authorize the mayor to sign all documents for the city.
Second.
Motion Garrick, second Reeker. Lane is here. If we have questions on this process, is there any discussion? Mr. Carmen, you have the floor. Lane, if you would take the center there, please.
Mayor Kelleher, Councilman Carmen, this is all city-owned equipment. This is not compensated, you know, fully compensated. This is just our equipment. Most of it is very old and outdated.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lane. Anyone have any other questions while Lane is standing here? Thanks, Lane. Let's vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Number 14. Election of council president for 2021.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to table this until we can all be here. Have Councilman Nistley join us.
We have a motion?
I'll second that.
And a second. Let's vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Number 14 is tabled. Number 15, claims.
Move to pay the claim.
Second.
Motion Carmen, second Reeker. Let's vote. Okay, passes seven to zero. We are down to the public agenda request. This is the phase of the meeting where members of the public can come forth and propose a future agenda item. I would read this reminder. We respect our city employees and respect that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or mayor. Individuals in violation will be declared out of order. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to step forward and request something on a future agenda? Yes, sir, please come to the microphone.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for the time. The reason I'm here is that-
Sir, sir, sorry. Could you tell us who you are and where you live?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Michael Cook. I live at 1906 West Eugene, here in North Platte, actually, just outside the city limits. The reason I'm here is that in, on September 17 of 2019, the council issued a conditional use permit to Justin Warner, doing business as Creative Landscaping LLC. In that conditional use permit, there were seven items stipulated that were to be addressed in a year as to whether they had been complied with, or at least had seen some effort towards compliance by Mr. Warner and his company. On 11/17 of 2020, the item was on the agenda as a no-action item by the previous council. No discussion and/or review was done at that time. It was simply acknowledged as a discussion and dismissed. This does not meet the compliance that was issued by the council at that time for Mr. Warner to address the, there were actually seven items that were told, six of which were addressed to him by the planning department at that time in a formal letter that was written by-
Mr. Cook, sorry to interrupt you. I apologize. We will be happy to consider putting this on a future agenda item, and we will let you know what the decision is by mail, and we will let you know either way what we decide and the date of when it would be considered, okay? Thank you.
Okay.
I don't mean to cut you off, but we can't have a lot of debate, or we're risking violating a meeting law, so.
No, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
I understand. What I was going to, the last thing I wanted to mention was, I'll be happy to provide the oral comments that I made at the four meetings that were held before that conditional use permit was issued, and it talked about the various things that were, that needed to be discussed and decided upon.
Okay, thank you. We will be in contact.
Okay.
Do we have anyone else who'd like to bring something to be considered in the future? It would appear not.
Make a motion adjourned. Second.
Motion Reeker, Garrick, second. Vote, please. Thank you, everyone. And I would just like to say Merry Christmas.
This one's mine.
Who is it?
You know, that's not a bad-